You're unmuted, great. Start meeting seven oh four and we'll do roll call. President Valerian Fowler.
Here.
Councilmember Dedekhiti Kine.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Castilla.
Here.
Councilmember Andrea D'Atillo.
Here.
Councilmember Shirley Claire Fuller. Is not present. Councilmember Brooke Bruchette Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Greg Bradonovich.
Here.
Council. Mayor Paul, we have that.
Here.
Thank you, everybody, for being here. Now we will do the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. All right, we have a special recognition today. And we have two special people here with us. In the chambers. And we're going to be doing proclamation, recognizing honoring former Churchill Borough Council members Shay and Diane. Any consensus you got? Mayor's got it?
Got it.
Take a picture. Let's see. Page before Joe. Diane.
Mr. Stan right here.
Good, good.
Office of Council and Mayor. A proclamation honoring Diane Law. Whereas Diane Law has dedicated over ten years of exemplary service as Vice President and Member of the Churchill Borough Council. And whereas during her tenure, Diane Law has been instrumental in transferring transforming the philosophy of Churchill Borough management. From a conservative approach to a more progressive and engaged stance, fostering substantial growth and innovation. And whereas Diane Law has successfully recruited and retained a professional team of exceptionally talented and committed staff. And activist council members, including the competent solicitor Gavin Robb and skills engineer Dennis Flynn. Engineering the borough's leadership with fresh perspectives and energy. And whereas Diane Law has improved communication and strengthened relationships among administration administrative staff. Chief of Police, the Mayor, council members, enhancing the overall governance and operational efficiency of the borough. And whereas Diane Law has acted decisively to prevent fracking in Churchill, starting in two thousand fifteen. Working with community volunteers to develop a zoning ordinance amended amendment. That has served as a model for other municipalities facing similar challenges from the oil and gas industry. And whereas Diane Law has overseen the elimination of the Collins Drive pub station. Secured the borough's first major grant funding and initiated multi municipal infrastructure collaboration. And whereas Diane Law has co-founded the Woodland Hills School District Municipalities Consortium. Marking the first time since nineteen eighty one that municipal govern governments convened to directly impact management and administration. Of the west of the Woodland Hills School District. And whereas Diane Law founded the Churchill Borough Tree Committee promoting environmental stewardship. And enhancing community green spaces and. Whereas Diane Law has represented the Churchill Borough with distinction in various regional and municipal organizations. Including the Allegheny County Boroughs Association, becoming the first Churchill Board Member and the first woman from District Two. The Allegheny League of Municipalities, the Turtle Creek Valley Council of Governments. And the Executive Board of the Commerce of Neighborhood Neighborhood Communities. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I Churchill Borough Churchill Borough Mayor Paul Gamera. Do hereby recognize and extend our deepest gratitude and recognition to Diane Law for her extraordinary service. Unwavering dedication and remarkable contributions to Churchill Borough. Her legacy of transformative progress and community focused leadership will be celebrated and remembered for years to come. In witness thereof, I have I have hereunto cause the seal of the Borough of Churchill to be affixed this ninth day of September two thousand twenty four.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Diane. Thank you.
Careful your desk at home. Mr. Duren. Your turn. Congratulations. From the Office of Council and Mayor. Whereas Jay Duren has devoted twelve over twelve years of outstanding leadership and dedication as President and Member of the Churchill Borough Council. And whereas during his tenure, Jay Jay Duren initiated the council's first effort. To partner with neighboring communities to explore the creation of a regional police department. Reflecting his commitment to regional cooperation and enhance public safety. And whereas Jade Warren played a key role in promoting the zone C one planning and visioning. Public presentations by PATDAC, MTA, and consultants, including recruiting the first the borough's first citizen steering committee. And whereas Jade Warren effectively navigated the complexities associated with the Hillwood Amazon Development Proposal. Over a challenging two and a half year period, demonstrating resilience and strategic achievement. And whereas Jay Duren secured one million dollars in grant funding in collaboration with Senator Costa. For the development for the development of an all inclusive playground, enhancing recreational opportunities and accessibility for all residents. And whereas Jay Duren has collaborated with the creation of the Churchill Monroeville Wilkins. Multi municipal implementable comprehensive plan. And successfully promoted public presentations and successfully transforming to Zoom communications with public. In response to the COVID nineteen pandemic in the spring of two thousand twenty and. Whereas with over twenty years of experience in providing fair housing and civil rights guidance. Jay Doren has consistently championed equitable and just practices within the community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I Churchill Borough Mayor Paul Gamera. Do hereby recognize and extend our deepest gratitude and recognition to Jay Doren. For his exceptional service, visionary leadership, and substantial contributions to Churchill Borough. His efforts have left have left a lasting impact on the community, promoting cooperation, innovation, and inclusivity. And witness thereof, I hereunto cause the seal of the Borough of Churchill to be affixed. September two thousand twenty four.
Sorry, we couldn't afford can't be present. I'll see your charge question. You'll be getting a bill later for that.
There's some stuff in there.
Hi Charlie.
The minutes reflect our council member Shirley Butler Fuller joined us via Zoom.
All right. Thank you, Bob. I bet it feels a little different being on the other side.
It is. I can speak as a part of the citizen.
Should I be worried? Should I be scared? All right, now we're we're going to be moving on to our public comments. And just to say we have about eight people, nine people. So tiny.
Nine.
Nine people. We have nine people on. If you would like to speak, we'll give the room first. If you'd like to speak. Please come onto the podium, state your name, your address, and you have three minutes. Okay, you can hear Ben drop. It's hard. We'll move online. If you would like to speak, please raise your virtual hand and they will promote you. All right. Somebody raised a hand. All right. Athleen.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, this is Kate Carrigan Hill. I live at fourteen forty one Buella Road. And I know I talked about this before, but I'm going to add that these arrows on Buella Road. And giving us an internal lane to turn into our driveways has been huge. So it's a big thanks from anyone who lives on Buella that we are. Able to turn into our driveways without being smacked from behind. So thanks to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else online? All right, we will close. Public comment.
Madam President, I motion to add the appointment of Vice President to the agenda.
There a second?
Second.
And Madam President, I.
Oh, wait, please.
We have first get the see if there's any discussion.
Oh, question on the yeah. Any discussion? Is it a roll call vote or is it all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Who is the nominee?
That's that's that will be the next motion that is making.
Okay, Madam President.
Hold on. We have we get a clear vote? Is you voted yes? If you did not vote yes?
Written yes to.
All in favor?
And.
Adding it to the agenda. Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now, petition.
Okay, Madam President, I motion to appoint Andrea D'Atillo to Vice President of the Council.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Before there is, we should have given opportunity for public comments since it was not on the agenda there.
All the comments on this specific. Okay, do we just open up the floor to public comments during the discussion section?
As wherever you're whatever, either before council done or after council's done, whatever your preferences.
Oh, let's do it now. Before we go in, is there any comments regarding that motion from the public here in the room or online? If you have any comments online, please raise your hand. I'm going to say that there's no comments online since nobody can raise their hand and we're in the middle of the discussion. So any discussion regarding appointing Andrea as Vice President from council?
I just had a question.
Yeah.
You didn't run out of the room screaming, no, 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 like the do you accept? Is that something you have yet?
Yes, I I as I've worked smoothly with Michelle and Ashley and the staff. I believe that this is a easy transition because we work so well together and I hope that we continue to be counsel together. And hear everyone's voice. That's my that's my only goal and I'm here to serve the public and our house.
The door's there if you still want.
Any other discussions? That's a great question, Matt.
I have some comments. I've worked with you since you've both went in. We have been on several committees together. Um, we talk a lot about counsel and things that can make things better. I work really great with you, so. You've been wonderful. You've been wonderful as well. So I feel that we have a strong team. We don't we but and we have a strong council, which is so important. So we have a group of people who are willing to do which right of the borough. And I think that's the most important thing and I'm happy to serve.
Awesome. All right, and it's a roll call vote? All right. All in favor for Andrea?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Thank you.
Do we have? Do we get Shirley's? We get all the is it clear to go to what?
She just unmuted herself early. Voting for Andrea, was that a yes or a no? And you can unmute yourself. You're muted right now. Oh, that was on her. That's her. Yeah. Yeah, that's her. That's you right. Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Now. Yeah, I can hear you.
Now, 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 yes.
Yeah, great. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
All right. And we'll move on to the ordinary items except by motion. Also, congratulations.
Congratulations.
And we'll do this.
I would like to make a motion to improve the meeting minutes from the August twenty eighth, twenty twenty four special meeting of council.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And it carries moving on to the mayor's report.
Madam President, motion to accept the mayor's report for September twenty twenty four.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And it's accepted. Moving on to our treasurer's report. What does he hold? The governor report? The governor report for now. Sorry, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Chief has reported to me that during the month of July, there were no significant incidents of there were no significant incidents. During the month of August twenty twenty four. Officers handled a total of one thousand four events for this month. The total of seven thousand six hundred ninety six year today, consisting of call prepared and proactive patrol engagements and detail. Affecting within with three arrests. The department's five police vehicles logged a total of five thousand four hundred fourteen miles. Combined year to date total is now thirty six thousand two hundred thirty three miles. Car number nine, the two thousand thirteen Ford Tarsus has been decommissioned as a patrol car and is now being used. By code enforcement officer Scott Stonebreak. Two thousand twenty four Dodge Durango SUV is now fully in service. The ticket summary for the month of August twenty twenty four was sixty six. Zero non-traffic, nine parking and fifty seven traffic tickets. The Magistero fines for August twenty twenty four was six hundred nineteen dollars ninety four cents, six thousand one hundred. Six thousand one hundred eighty dollars and eighty four cents. And I have to apologize. That's been out of my report. For the past couple of months and I just kind of realized that I had not been including that in my emergency report. On Sunday, August twenty fifth, our department was proud to participate in the annual Shop with a Cop held at the Macy's Monroe Mall location. This event sponsored by Macy's in collaboration with the Pennsylvania State Police and the Allegheny Police Cadets. Cadet bring to bring together multiple multiple law enforcement agencies in the area. Guard officers, select a child from their own community to participate. The day starts with a police parade around the mall complex where the child gets to ride along with their officer. Following a light breakfast, the officer then escorts his child and their parent. As they shop for new clothes and shoes for the upcoming school year, with each child being allotted two hundred fifty dollars to spend. Each child is also then presented with a new backpack full of school supplies essentials. By State Senator Jim Brewster and State Representative Brandon Matt Markowsen. Churchill Police Department has been actively participating in this most worthy event since inception in two thousand nineteen. Details and other related statistics concerning the police department during the month of August twenty twenty four are attached to the. To the police to the police department reports. Thank you. And Officer Shaw would like to mention something about shop with a cup which on his butt.
They didn't find him cool? Like, come on. Okay.
We have them from B. They're my family. Usually a first.
You presume it.
Thank you, Mayor. Madam President, motion to accept the president's report for August thirty first, twenty twenty four. And directing the finance officer to pay the bills for the Borough of Churchill recruited since August sixth, twenty twenty four.
Is there a second?
Right here.
Any discussion?
I just want to make a note. Sorry.
Oh, no, I was gonna I was gonna ask you to on the on the math on the.
Yeah, there was an there's an error in the Excel sheet for our base staff base statement balances. Um, that we didn't check before it was printed, so it should not be negative three thousand one sixty. So we'll make sure to get the correct bound statement to you for this month.
Okay.
Then make sure in our future events that that error is not in our.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. And as normal, I would like to read just a larger book.
Yep.
We have Alcatraz for twenty two thousand nine hundred and fifty seven dollars and ninety nine cents. Gateway for twenty nine thousand six hundred and fifty six thousand six six hundred and sixty six dollars and seventy cents. Big Leody for twenty six thousand eight hundred and ninety two dollars and fifty five cents. MRM workers compensation for twenty two thousand eight hundred and sixty eight dollars and fifty five cents. Sole construction for nineteen thousand five hundred and twenty three dollars and twenty one cents and Axon's eight eight Axon or Axon? Let me answer Axon. Seventeen thousand two hundred and twenty six dollars and seventy six cents. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Do you want to explain what the Axon bill is or? Or the construction that we're paying for?
Again, absolutely, yeah.
I will unmute Ashley. She can give more information if she's able to.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The Axon bill is police department equipment. Um, I'm not exactly sure what it entitles, but I do know that it's has something to do with. The radios and the equipment of the police department.
I believe it's the body here.
It's the body hands. And the solely construction?
In the sole line construction, I believe it was for the emergency repairs.
Uh, yeah, that is that is the contractor for the excavation repairs for the San Interior Center.
So sorry, is that part of planned work? Was that planned work or?
There's they're both included with there. They did complete some emergency work, but there are also. O and N work included with that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And it carries. And we're moving on to something exciting, super exciting.
So the staff and finance committee has been working tirelessly on. The twenty twenty five budget. It's just a draft. It's not our final by any means. We are just. Trying to get through this. So as you show, you're going to show the screen, right?
Yep.
For your effort. Thank you. Very good.
I'm going to make sure those viewing online can see it too. So I heard lots of people working on those actually.
Can I see it?
Still standing now.
Wait. Make sure that people on can see it.
He said one of them to remember you did that.
Yeah, it's. I think you have to do a screen share. In the Zoom meeting.
Perfect. So now everybody online should be able to see the twenty twenty-five draft one budget presentation. Reminder, this is a, yeah, this is a draft, very draft, first draft.
Yeah, and for this, Ashley put this together, she worked really hard with the rest of the team, Ralph had a lot of, uh, help with this, myself and Dennis as well, um, kind of just talking about some of the unexpected events that came up throughout this year that we weren't really expecting. And it really shined a light on some of big infrastructure expenditures that we're seeing, uh, that might come up in twenty twenty-five. So I will let Ashley go ahead and present this presentation that we first, very diligently on.
Thank you, Michelle. Um, yeah, staff worked collectively on this presentation, just so that we can show you guys, uh, what we think is like the most critical things happening right now in the borough. So if you want to go to the next slide. This is the twenty twenty-five draft one budget. And I think our vision for Churchill is that we strive to make this a safe, you know, healthy community for everyone, really, you know, people coming through, passing by for families that live here, businesses, individuals that, um, that would like to move here in the future. Uh, we have a vision of making this a safe borough for all. And our mission, as always, is to protect people and property, um, businesses, institutions, organizations. And this is accomplished, uh, by having safe roads, um, a community-based policing, and, you know, recreational areas for, for all. And just a couple of our values. Uh, the people matter to us, uh, you know, uh, meaningful and inclusive public participation is essential for good decision-making. Uh, all we do must be fair and just. And the actions taken by the borough should seek to enhance the well-being of residents, land, water, and air of the borough. Next slide. The twenty twenty-five spending plan addresses strategic product priorities for the following desired outcomes of a full-service local government. Um, just a couple of those are safe, to be well-maintained, efficient and productive, accommodating, fiscally responsible. And we want to be held accountable as well, and we also want to produce a high quality of life to all residents and people, you know, passing through the borough. And this is just a little, uh, slide on our fund balance policy, which is resolution four, five, three, zero. Uh, which is, our goal is to maintain a year-end general fund balance with a minimum of fifteen percent. Uh, we strive to have a maximum eighteen percent of that year's total general fund operating expenditures. And just to give a little insight on where we were this time last year, um, this was the twenty twenty-three adopted general fund budget. The beginning balance was at one million three hundred and seventy-nine thousand five hundred and twenty-three dollars and thirty-one cents. Uh, we adopted a budget to have a revenue of three million one hundred and seventeen thousand two hundred and ninety-eight dollars and sixty-six cents. Uh, expenditures would be the same, and the anticipating end in balance would be the same as the projected beginning balance at one million three hundred and seventy-nine thousand five hundred and twenty-three dollars and thirty-one cents. Also, heading into twenty twenty-four, um, we hired Scott Stonebreaker, our property safety specialist. We also hired a new police officer this year. We got a new police car. Um, making us have a full fleet. Uh, we did some road paving. We had the stream restoration project that was going on and the O and M sewer maintenance that were, that is required. Next slide. And where are we at now? These numbers are up, updated until July twenty twenty-four. Uh, the revenue is at two millions six hundred and fifty-six thousand nine hundred and ten dollars and seventy-one cents. The expenditures are at two million one hundred and fifty-two thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars and thirty-one cents. And twenty twenty-four projected year end, right now, um, with the revenue and expenditures that we have gotten in, we have a difference of negative sixty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars and sixty cents for our projected year end. And I think, uh, you know, with staff coming, collectively coming up with some of our current challenges, I think, uh, some of the major things that we have going on right now is the failing infrastructure of the borough. Um, we've had a couple of emergency repairs going on, uh, road paving and repairs of the roads, uh, the manhole-to-manhole lining, CCTV repairs where they televise the lines, and some sanitary sewer and stormwater. It's challenges that we have going on right now. And the next few slides kind of go into our current challenges. And this was, uh, one of our current challenges that we had not too long ago, uh, regarding the failing infrastructure, which is the emergency Marbury Road storm sewer repair. We had a sinkhole that happened in Marbury. Um, the estimated cost was about eleven thousand dollars. And it's to keep in mind that the paving contractor still needs to mill and pave, but as you could see, um, with a couple of these pictures here, that this pipe, we had a tin whistle pipe, um, that was put throughout the borough in about the nineteen sixties, I believe, somewhere around then, um, that is just kind of rotting away, causing, you know, some sinkholes and writing, rotting pop pipes throughout the borough. This is another sinkhole that we had on Kingsdale Road. Um, the estimated cost for pairs at a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. And again, these were the tin whistle pipes. Um, this is the thirty-six inch storm sewer line. They're huge. And it's important to note that, you know, and emergency repairs are more costly, um, and will cost us, you know, a lot more than actually going ahead and fixing the project. I don't know if anyone has anything they want to elaborate.
I want to say thank you for showing these pictures. Um, I think it's important for us, with council, as well as the residents, to see what's out there and what is failing and what that, what that looks like. Um, you know, maybe in your backyard, or you may hear about it, but it's, I think pictures are very impactful, and people are visual learners, so thank you for showing and having copies of needed to it.
Uh, two years ago, we replaced two hundred and fifty feet of the pipe upstream of that.
Okay.
So we still have, I think it's five hundred and sixty feet of pipe to replace.
It was identified at that time, and we knew this would eventually hurt. We know that, uh, mostly corrugated metal pipe within the municipality has met its lifespan, and uh, that has all been included within the overall capital improvement projects associated with stormwater that we've discussed over the years. Um, fortunately, you know, we knew this was going to happen eventually, and, and it is starting to occur some of these, uh, sinkholes.
And for the proposed O and M stormwater projects, this is a description of the buckets that, uh, Gateway had prepared for us. Um, it just shows the severity of what needs to be done, uh, the place into buckets. Uh, bucket four, um, for instance, would not need to televise since the CCTV is available, um, that's like a low defect level, and bucket one would be high. Um, something that needs to be done right away, example like Bueller Road and other things that we have completed. For the proposed sanitary O and M stormwater projects, uh, what was placed in bucket one was Bueller Road, estimated cost nineteen thousand five hundred. And I believe some of this has been done, um, in Marbury Road, the manhole-to-manhole lining, which was in bucket two. And I think, uh, the, that this one is a lot more costly, and the gateway estimate approximately fifty-two thousand for segments totaling seven hundred and sixty-seven. And, um, Denny, would you like to elaborate that on that at all?
Yeah, the, uh, the bucket one Bueller Road repairs are, are on this year's contract for, uh, sole line form. The Marbury Road man, man lining, uh, that's shown in bucket two, that was not included within, um, work orders for the lining contractor to complete this year. So that is, uh, an item that is prioritized for next year, being that portions of it are under, um, the roadway that was recently paved.
Thank you. And for the capital storm project summary for, uh, the proposed projects, um, it's at a total of eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and that's with the Marbury Road project of one hundred and eighty thousand, Camel Court, seventy thousand, Nottingham Drive, a hundred and sixty thousand, Kingsdale Phase Three at a hundred and forty thousand, and Creek Edge, uh, Drive Flooding, three hundred and thirty thousand. And those are just some of the projects that are proposed to us. Um, I know some of them are, you know, higher up on our priority list than others. But if we, you know, were to kind of do a total, it would equal out to that much. Do anyone have any questions, or anyone want to elaborate?
I, I have a question. What is the order of importance of these five different places, or is there?
I, I would bring up that the Marbury Road, uh, the thirty-six inch sewer there, that is the same thirty-six inch sewer that we've had, um, uh, sinkholes occur, that's one that a few years back, uh, there was a, uh, trash truck that actually got, got caught in the sinkhole at the cul-de-sac. It's a little bit further down, and there is a large tree near, um, near the pipe as well, that would be on, that we, we would say should be prioritized. Um, Kingsdale Phase Three, that was part of what was shown in the photos earlier with the sinkholes in the backyard. Uh, yeah, both Camel Court, Nottingham are both in yards where sinkholes have formed. Uh, the Creek Edge Drive Flooding, that was actually identified in the twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen. Yeah, twenty eighteen flooding, in which there was a, uh, stormwater open house. It came to the municipality to speak, and that was the highest priority at the time. There was a lot of flooding that occurred during the large storm events there. Uh, that project would involve a large stormwater detention basin, because there's approximately twelve acres of area of undetained flow, um, that would need to be controlled there. Um, there have not been any significant issues since then, and so that, that may be a little bit further down, uh, down on the list. Um, it is pretty much prioritized in terms of potential health, safety, and welfare, um, concerns.
Question about the Creek Edge Drive Flooding. I mean, we've had a lot of pretty big storms and, and quick storms since twenty seventeen. Have we done other repairs around that area that maybe helped since then to improve that, or?
You know, because of that. So what we've done, so every time there's a storm, every neighbor goes out to make sure every grate completely cleared out. There, the houses at the corner that flooded the most, they, they spent a hundred and eighty thousand dollars of their money to re, like, really rebuild their house and everything. There's, if ever, everyone down there now has, um, like, uh, flood barriers, they put up every time it rains. So it's, it's, it's still happening, but we've just figured out a way to not make it.
And by we, you mean the resident authorities?
Yes, we as in the residents.
Uh, there, there has been some work that was completed as well.
A little bit, yeah.
Smoke testing of the sanitary sewers, and it was in conjunction, actually, with some of the, uh, work that was completed with the pump station. When that was removed, there was some upstream stormwater and sanitary sewer repairs that were completed at that time. Again, not, not necessarily to, to resolve everything. Part of it was that there are a number of, um, driveways that are slowed back towards the house, and so there were some, uh, some precautions that were taken by the residents as well to assist with that.
Thank you.
Your residents, thank you. We're here for you.
Regarding the emergency repairs on Marbury and Kingsdale, when was the last time that those types were, um, CCTV?
Uh, the Marbury Road was televised before the paving project that was completed in twenty twenty-one. That's when the majority of these were initially identified and, and proposed to the municipality. Most of them, and, uh, uh, Kingsdale was unable to be televised because there's no bottom of pipe, so they had attempted to televise it when the initial sinkholes were identified. That work was completed in twenty nineteen. I believe it's phase one, uh, based on, uh, the costs associated that with that. We, we have identified that the rest of the corrugated mi, metal pipe is unable to be televised at this point because there is no bottom, so they can't put it, put a camera.
Um, and then my follow-up question is regarding the funds that we've used to pave roads, but that have been reallocated or redirected to address these more pressing issues. So that way we could avoid paving a road and spending, I don't know, three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand to pave a road, and then realizing, or already knowing that there were pipes underground that had an expiration or expiration that was going to be approaching, um, and so now we're going to have to repay.
I mean, I, I'll be able to speak, at least to the, uh, Marbury Roads. All that televising was completed before the work. Majority of the repairs within the roadway were completed prior to that paving being completed. Uh, the one repair that, uh, occurred this past year, that was of a cross, uh, storm pipe that was not previously repaired. We do have lining that is included within there. Those at the time of televising and the, uh, paving work that was completed, um, were identified as didn't even completed right then, but should be completed in the very near future, now, or a few years to pass then, so. If, yeah, funds have been directed otherwise after that fact, but I, I, again, I don't, I guess I don't control the funds and how they're directed at that.
Sure. So now asking about, uh, Ridgewood, I know that's not on your list, uh, storm projects. Um, but did we confirm that the underground pipes were not deteriorating, and that it was sufficient to pay the?
Rid, Ridgewood is not, uh, included within this year's contract. That was an ad alternate. That was not chosen.
Was it McCrady?
McCrady, yes. McCrady has been televised, and all underground sewers have been resolved in that area.
So I, I have a general follow-up question on, you know, because this is a capital budget, you know, obviously, long, long timeline, big money. Uh, at one point, the borough had, had talked about, uh, stormwater fee to help fund some of this and make sure that the funds came from the right places and can also be applied to development. Um, I'm out of the loop, so what's, is, is there any update on that? Is that something we'll be moving forward here eventually, or?
We're going to be definitely talking about that. When you're looking at the appropriate amounts and, and how to assess it, yeah. Well, how did you look?
Yeah, was, so was there some development in the, I know that it was put on hold because there were some losses that were happening um, at the state level, I believe. We don't, we don't have clarity. I mean, the, the law has not changed, it, this, those kids are still pending, and it would require an authority at this point, creation of authority. Thank you.
I'll take over. Um, as we mentioned, there's the, the Gun Eye Project on Marbury, uh, that would cost an estimated one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. There's also Camel Court Project, which is estimated seventy thousand dollars. Uh, and then a manhole-to-manhole lining, which would be roughly one hundred and thirteen thousand dollars.
That's a either-or kind of scenario for Camel Court. The excavation repair would just be seventy feet of that pipe, just to replace that, uh, the specific area where the sinkhole is formed, or where the crush pipe is formed. The one hundred and thirteen thousand, or that would take care of the entire three hundred-foot, um, stretch of pipe. And would perform a manual, an internal man, man lining. So it's kind of one of those scenarios of a, of a whether or not you want to put a Band-Aid on the one piece for complete that tire.
You back, Ashley?
Yes. Moving on to Nottingham Drive Project, so my kids just came in the door.
Yes, Nottingham Drive final.
Okay, so the estimate, the updated estimated cost for that is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Reroute chosen due to limited access and high restoration costs of current alignment. Um, permitting may be required to work in vicinity of the waterway, and there goes a picture as well of, of one of the pipes from Nottingham Drive as well. from Nottingham Drive as well. And the Kingsdale Phase Three, um which is estimated about a hundred and forty thousand. And that is Phase One and Phase Two has already been completed. Approximately five hundred have been removed and replaced stormwater pipes. Pipe with remove and replace install new catch basins. And below is just a picture of what we received from Gateway. It's just a picture of where the pipes are placed as well. And to move on to road paving, um I know next year in twenty twenty-five, uh we want to focus on Henley Drive, the thirty-eight hundred block. We don't know exactly what the cost will be, um as you know, we do have a winter coming up. And I know with the plowing and just other natural occurrences, uh you know, we just have predictions that this road could get worse as well as the Ridgewood three hundred thirty-six hundred block. And the estimated cost is for that is sixty-eight thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars, and that's what we received from the estimates that we received for the twenty twenty-four bid.
So that number could be completely different after.
And for the storm CCTV, um the fifty-two percent of our lines have not been televised. So we do uh need to work on that and deciding, I'm guessing, deciding like which streets need to be televised next. Is that right, Danny, or do you want to talk about that a little?
Yeah, there there's not a regulation like there is for sanitary sewers that requires all sanitary sewers to televise once every ten years. Um, that's kind of a recommendation, a proactive approach is to start to televising the storm sewers ahead of time. Um, right now typically it's just televising the storm sewers ahead of any paving projects. Verify that, you know, there's not damaged pipes within a uh within a roadway to be paved, but what we were proposing is to it on a proactive approach, you could break down the storm sewers and start to televise ten percent of the storm sewers as well in order to make sure that we say enough maintenance.
And then if we're spending the time and money to be CCTVing, then we're spending less money on doing emergency repairs.
Yeah.
And all all those items were considered as part of the doesn't make sense study of stormwater fee. Those fees would be associated with that so that that fee could directly offset any cost.
And so for the twenty twenty-four biggest impacts, I think, um collectively staff, we thought that hiring the property safety specialists and the change in staff were two big impacts right off the bat for twenty twenty-four. The twenty twenty-four pavement program, also the new police vehicle, the new police officer. We we just strive to have more safety throughout the borough, and I think that um impacts it a lot. Uh, the emergency sinkhole repairs is definitely impacting us the the budget as well right now. And uh the Bullocks Penn Park Stream Restoration as well that we had in the budget. So for the twenty twenty-five general fund budget, this is just draft one. Um, and this would be with no tax increase and no transfers to any funds. Our beginning balance will be five hundred and seventy-two thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars and ninety cents. Revenue is three million four hundred and four thousand three hundred and thirty-nine uh dollars and sixty-six cents. And expenditures of three million four hundred and sixty-seven dollars, two hundred and six four, I'm sorry, three million four hundred and sixty-seven thousand two hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-six cents. And that would bring us with a negative sixty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars and sixty cents difference. These were, these are numbers if we proposed a one point five mil increase, which will bring the borough to nine point five mils and again, no transfers at all. And with this, we would have a beginning balance of five hundred and seventy. We would have a beginning balance of five hundred and seventy-two thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars and ninety cents. The revenue, three million six hundred and thirty-nine thousand four hundred and four dollars. And with the expenditures being at three million three hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifteen cents. That would bring us out a difference of three hundred and eleven thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents. And the next one would be uh just another draft version if we did a two mil increase. And we can also provide you guys with more in-depth numbers too after this if you'd like. Um, but we had the same beginning balance uh with the revenue three million seven hundred and sixty-two thousand seven hundred and forty-six dollars. And with our expenditures, we had a difference of four hundred and thirty-five thousand one hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-five cents.
No, at the end of the day, we're not saying like this or that. You know, possibly fall if council decides to do anything at all.
Yeah, and I think it's important for everybody to see what the numbers look like.
Transfer and transfer a hundred percent. At any point, please, if anyone has a question, we'll gladly go through it. I mean, this is a rough draft, number one. And um we're really trying to get ahead in certain projects because as we found out, these emergency sinkhole repairs, that killed us. That that absolutely killed us. So I'd rather spend sixty thousand instead of eighty thousand next next year. We have a budget for sixty and then get whacked by eighty, so.
Well, and it's important for our residents to see how expensive things are.
Yeah, crazy.
But in addition to the emergency repair, the restoration project, John Bull's pens, I believe, also came over uh bid, so. You know, it was bringing that to the forefront as well. Thirty thousand dollars every?
Yeah, so you know, we have some decisions that we need to make from twenty twenty-five. And I think, you know, the priority is that, you know, we desire to have public safety, safe infrastructure, and property maintenance. I think those are three main things that a staff and, you know, just also council as well believes that we need throughout the borough. So alternative revenue, um you know, like Matt had said earlier, uh we were, you know, I'm trying to come up with numbers for storm water water management fee, um raising the millage. We also are, you know, looking into numbers of sewage fee. And uh recently, the borough had switched funds to Pliggett and uh we changed banks to Huntington Bank as well, which uh we've been doing pretty well so far. It's only been a month, but we've been, you know, gaining interest on our funds and we're looking to increase in that way as well, too.
So booking in various brands, especially whenever it comes to storm water. Like there's the P A Small Water and the H two O brand that the state will hopefully open up soon. Um, yeah, so those will be available and that's definitely something that we will be applying for for these various projects. So the thing that I'm worried where the brands get tricky is if it becomes an emergency repair.
Yeah, and I I think that's important for residents to know that when the borough itself or staff are applying for grants, sometimes, one, it takes a whole year for us to get something, right? So that takes time, sometimes more. And two, they don't fund, like you said, emergency repairs. That is not something that is funded through grant. So keeping that in mind, a lot of thought and planning goes into grants.
I mean, believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe that there are certain grants that you actually have to show up the money first and then they'll reimburse you. It's a full grant.
Yeah, the minority of us, I I figured. So we set the budget for, let's pretend, a hundred thousand dollars. Even if we get, even if we know we're gonna get the grant, doesn't matter. It has to come out of the account first and right back in. We're not, we may not get it.
We may not get it. We may not get the grant just because we have five for grants, that doesn't mean that we're gonna get absolutely not.
How many people are applying for grants? Everyone. A lot of people are, so. Yeah, people say like, oh, apply for this, apply for that, but that that does not mean that we're going to get it. I guarantee you.
And I know also like staff, as well as the finance committee, has been looking into certain line items, seeing where we could cut funding. And trying, yeah, and trying to just like move things around there, see, uh, you know, how we can create more funds as well. Um, other funds accounts are our Capital Reserve, Road and Highway Operating Reserve, which is in Pliggett. Our Sanitary Sewer Fund, we have our Yegel Trust Fund, and we have our Real Estate Account as well, too. So some twenty, some challenges that we faced throughout the past four years, I believe, um, you know, it, we have an aging community. Uh, we have that Westinghouse site, we have, um, you know, since Scott came in this year as well, too, we have been looking into updating some ordinances. And we we had a big change in administration just this past twenty twenty-four. Uh, we would hit with the COVID pandemic inflation and then, um, you know, just failing infrastructure throughout the borough as well, too. And um just as, you know, part of some of the outcomes from those challenges, um we got Scott, the Property Safety Specialist. Uh, we've been getting more grants and we've been having um outstanding property maintenance of more compliance from residents and just, you know, people engaging more as well, too. And um with the aging community, we have more online activity and and, you know, resident engagement overall with the meetings and just every day in and out of the borough. And then, you know, some outcomes could from the Westinghouse site could also be a potential development. Um, the next steps, these are the next steps to getting the budget passed. Of course, this is just draft one. We're still, you know, gonna come back and create more drafts as well. Um, this is just kind of like a timeline showing you the next steps, which would be direct the manager to advertise the budget. That will be the Monday, November eleventh meeting. Uh, we'll place public notice in the Valley Mira. Post-draft budget online. Public notice through Savvy Citizens. We'll send it out through all social media, whether it's Facebook Savvy Citizen, um, our website. You'll be able to find it and uh we'll discuss the draft at the December second council workshop meeting. And um hopefully it's adopted by December ninth, twenty twenty-four at the regular council meeting. And I believe that's the end.
Thank you, Ashley. I appreciate it. Thank you, Erin.
Thank you all. Does anybody have any questions or anybody want to elaborate on anything?
Yeah, I just wanna kind of reiterate like the the goal of this was.
Uh, use it wisely and and invest it for our residents. Um, and there were the time that, you know, it's it's not so recent history anymore, but um where council didn't pave roads every year. They didn't think about paving roads every year. Um, there was, you know, times that Ralph told me about way back when where, you know, there weren't planned budgets, um, you know. There there wasn't money to do things. So um without having to come and and, you know, just raise taxes through the roof, um, you know, council and and previous members of council have worked hard to set a path that we have slowly and steadily been making improvements and progressing. So I just want to make sure that it doesn't get lost.
Thank you.
You know, and what's coming up, that that excellent work has been done. There's more work to do, absolutely. Um, and we're gonna do it well, but we're building on a very solid foundation because of the hard work of our staff and people that came for us.
I really appreciate you saying that because it can be discouraging looking at all is like, oh. Why haven't we done anything?
But but we have, and and we and we've been in a good position that when these emergencies come up, they're not overwhelming. They're not wonderful. We don't enjoy them. We don't want to spend that money. We don't have to, but we have the money to spend. We're able to get them fixed and we're able to continue to plan and and take care of priority projects, you know, mostly as needed.
Yeah. Thank you for sharing that. I appreciate it. All right, we'll move on to our action items for the evening.
Madam President, motion to adopt Resolution four six zero nine approving the Churchill Borough Active Transportation Plan.
Any other?
Second?
Any discussion?
I, oh, I was just gonna say, just as a reminder, you know, I I appreciated the presentation that was given last week and and all the work that the committee did to to bring that to fruition and our intern that helped with that as well, so. Uh, I think it's excellent work. And if anyone who's on tonight didn't get a chance to see the presentation on that, uh, it's recorded in the meeting from last week and it's excellent.
And it's on one.
All right, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And the motion carries in our second action item.
Madam President, motion to adopt Resolution four six one zero approving the Churchill Borough Complete Streets Policy.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And it carries, moving on to number three.
I would like to make a motion to authorize the Borough Manager to advertise and forward amending chapter two forty rental property of the Borough of Churchill to remove the requirements to identify occupants and tenants under the age of eighteen as part of the occupancy and rental registration process.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And it carries, moving on to number four.
Uh, Madam President, I would motion to adopt Resolution four six one two establishing a fee for applications and annual occupancy inspection for deferred home rentals.
Any discussion on that?
What is the fee? I'm thinking, just just say it could be a fee. There is no monetary value.
No, there there is a fee.
You mean forty-five?
The annual inspection, initial inspection is seventy-five, all inspections are seventy-five. The application fee is equal to whatever conditional use application is because you have to go through the condition process. That right now it's gonna be that thousand dollars for the class, you'll get some of that refund. We talked about last week, I think it's likely it's not gonna be, it's going to be probably around that amount for the week.
So the advertised is about four twenty-five. Um, and then for a court reporter, it's about thirty dollars an hour.
Their appearance, does she charge an appearance fee now too? I don't know, like a hundred and fifty dollars.
So appearance fee a hundred and fifty dollars and thirty dollars an hour, plus they also charge per page. Plus we'd have to pay for our Z E S O S for as well.
No, uh, so that that'll be a conditional use here for this board. Um, so we will need the D H B and the the per page will only imply just a little more of the transcript, so we won't have to charge that as well. And it will be have to start on a fifty, so it sounds like four hundred twenty-five, probably seventy-five for the stenographer. Um, you're probably talking about five hundred-ish, I'm guessing, is probably the.
All in.
So most people probably get a refund if we say that thousand dollars, you know, is is the max that you would have to spend or the lesser. Or the lesser costs, but if one got continued for some reason, or. Maybe somebody applied and a lot of neighbors didn't like that and came, you know, spoke for a long time in a meeting, that we, we could end up coming up close to that or more.
And obviously the core reporter per hour, so if it lasts long, then it's making more.
Right, or, or if it had to be continued, we'd have to advertise again, we would do that on the records, we wouldn't have to re-advertise.
Got it, okay. These are all of us in the borough that. It's not, we're not making money.
No.
There's no off charge here.
No, that's just, we're, we're, we get charged, so I feel that's, that's why I don't care about that. Any other discussion?
So, one, um. Is it possible, would it be appropriate to make a motion to table this until? You know, you provide some numbers to us, because you're just like rattling off some numbers right now, I haven't seen anything in writing. Um, to give council members an opportunity to look at other boroughs and municipalities in the area. To see what their process is, because the fees that you just quoted, the four hundred dollars to advertise. A thousand dollars is possibly maybe refunded, but we don't know for sure if there is gonna be any of that thousand dollar fee refunded. Is a way to make this process so cumbersome that homeowners just don't even pursue it if they want to. And I feel like members of this community have the right to, um. Diversify their income if they so choose. I understand that this is a resolution that we already passed, uh, but I'm just saying, I hope that there was no in-depth conversation about. The fees at that particular time, how they were going to be calculated, and so now that we are here. I feel that we need to take some due diligence to look at, is there an alternative way? To still ensure that we're providing public safety, but we're also not making this process ridiculous.
So, I will, I will say, if I, if I can figure it out, that, that this is required for every conditional use application regardless, whether it's a short-term rental or anything else. And every dollar is gonna be just exactly what the borough reserves, so whether they're gonna use research. Or not, it's still going to be whatever it costs they cost. And unless the borough wants to start funding, using taxpayer dollars to pay for people to turn their properties into short-term rentals. Then I would recommend that we follow the state law and pass those costs along to applicants, and those costs, like I said, they're not necessarily fixed, because. Prices go up now for newspapers, uh, we may need advertising a Sunday paper because of some timing issue, so it could be a little bit more that way. The core reporter we use may be cheaper than another core reporter, we'll certainly try to, we'll try to get the least expensive, but, you know. Adequate core reporter, so I would say there's not, I, I don't feel like there's much that Michelle or I could do that. That is going to change that number, it's going to be a fee, it's gonna cost what it costs, and you're gonna get something back here or not.
Yeah, and I, I think there's so much flexibility, or maybe flexibility is not the right word.
Variability?
There's, yeah, there's variability in this, um, but. I don't think there's, like you mentioned, there's anything that you all can do that you could provide council with, it's gonna be exactly one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. Because there is a lot of variability.
I will say that you'll see, you'll see these worded differently in other communities, where it will say. Conditional use needs five hundred dollars plus cost or something like that, but really, at the end of the day. Almost every municipality is gonna be charging almost the exact same thing, depending on who uses for advertising, who uses for your core report.
For some municipalities, like, uh, upcharging so that they make money off of this?
No, they're not allowed to.
They're not allowed to?
But, but like the one you just mentioned is an example, I mean, if it's five hundred dollars plus cost, and they're saying, hey, our cost just for our internal staff and. You know, whatever we have to do is five hundred bucks just to the borough, I mean, as part of the cost of doing that.
You make a good point, I will say that there are some places that build in an administrative.
Administrative.
Just as dollar per dollar, um, we're not. Even for Michelle, when actually it's time to process the applications, the way to set up is not.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you.
So I guess my follow-up question is, in taking over this resolution, does it have to be a conditional use?
It, I mean, we, we could change the ordinance, yeah, we, yeah, you wanna do amend the ordinance, you allow these, you, uses permitted by right, that can be done. You know, eliminate the public hearing component and bring down the cost.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
And motion carries, moving on to number five.
Madam President, motion to adopt resolution four six one one acknowledging the minimum municipal obligation for pension funds. Pursued to Pennsylvania Act two oh five of nineteen eighty-four. And municipal pension plan funding standard and recovery act, as amended for the year of twenty twenty-five. Municipal employee pension plan is thirty-five thousand two hundred eighty-five dollars, least pension plan of one hundred and thirty-three thousand one hundred ninety-six dollars.
Second?
Any discussion?
Sure, I'll just say that, um, I, I appreciate the work of the Finance Committee and, uh, I know from past pension audits, you know. We continue to be in excellent shape, which, you know, a lot of municipal governments can't say that they are, or that their pension funds are fully funded. Um, have, and have been, you know, well taken care of, so it's, it's excellent to see the borough continues to be in good financial health.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries, and moving on to number six.
Motion authorizing building inspection underwriters of, uh, Pennsylvania. To perform the borough's occupancy inspections from October through December twenty twenty-four.
There a second?
Second.
Any discussion? This is because Scott's. Yes, that, that's the only reason, this is, this is because Scott has a, has a plan, his wife's pregnant, so this is a plan leave, so we just have to. Make sure we feel like that when he's gone. Correct, and we talked a little bit about the, uh, uh, previous meetings, uh, about the different options that we could do. Um, and upon more conversations, this was. The best option for us, so, um, that is why the motion is on the table. Any other discussion?
Uh, question, I guess, how are we going to work with them, uh, to make sure that. There's not a difference in how things are handled, like that, they're gonna handle things the same way Scott has been, you know, that, that our residents don't see a difference in the service, I guess. While, while he's out.
Can I say something? So, so back when Dave was here, Dave did all the inspections, we had to roll the paperwork. So we basically told them where to go to the inspection, who needs to be inspected, so on and so forth. So, you know, we'll still manage to pay for work and all that stuff, and then they'll just, basically, because they're certified, they'll have to do the inspection. Okay, and then, you know, the payment, people pay, it'll be in and out, so it won't be costing us. You know, like any more money, it'll be the payment that they're paying, go directly to BIU.
And also I've asked for a meeting to be set up between Ralph, the inspector, and Scott before they leave.
Great.
Before Scott goes on leave.
And do we know, is it gonna be one person covering the borough, or is it gonna be multiple different inspectors?
Just one person. Ralph, another Ralph. Yeah, I think that, that, that meeting will be really important, because, uh, handoff, this is our expectation.
And then I'll just take over the, uh, code enforcement as far as, you know, the, the jurisdictions and people have, the wires for the. High grass, well, we won't have it back then, but I mean, just for example, you know, trash cancel and so forth.
Okay.
So I'll pick that up while it's on.
Great.
Any other jobs you wanna do besides, you know, fire chief and public works? You gonna be a police officer, dude?
Great, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and we'll move on to our discussion items, we do have a. Um, Frank, Frank, if you'd like to speak for the council.
Yes, um. First of all, I apologize if you don't understand me too well, I had a couple of wisdom teeth pulled this morning, yeah, also a little bit dumber at the time. Uh, anyways, yes, I'm Frank Mastodran, the director of Witten Hills EMS, um. I did send a letter, uh, earlier last night to you, because I did work last night, third block, I'm gonna decide to play the code in the wrong one. Uh, requesting the upper capital payment from Churchill Borough to Witten Hills EMS to cover the borough for the year. Uh, one of the things I have been talking with Michelle about, and we have been working with other boroughs for, is to enact the, uh. Point five mil from all the, uh, uh, boroughs to pay for emergency services. Shell Pump has done this for the last four years, uh, one of the things that we do for them is. That, uh, once we transport somebody to hospital, we don't build bounds, build them for anything. Unfortunately, with the, uh, day of the insurance companies nowadays, imagine running a business and only being able to collect fifty percent of what is owed to you. Our costs have gone up significantly, as I, sure you guys all know with everything, you know, trucks, four years ago, the cost of a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Are now well over three hundred. Insurances, employees, uh, as far as their insurance stuff go, it's skyrocketing. EMS is, uh, at the last, uh, chief meeting we had, it was just basically declared EMS is not a viable business right now. You have, uh, North Frazel's Fire Department that is closing their EMS here shortly, they have two employees. Uh, priority one, who basically doesn't cover ten percent of their calls in the borough, it's all covered by outside agencies. Right now in this area between Penn Hills, us, and eastern area, we're covering everything from the city on our way out to, um, Nuro. And it's just, it's getting to the point where, yes, we do need help. Um, so again, I'd like to sit down with, to the, uh, council members as well as Michelle, we spoke a little bit about it, but, yeah, enacting the whole, um. EMS, uh, village. And again, the same thing that we did over at Shell Pump, where that, yeah, if you call nine one one for an ambulance, you don't have to worry about paying any. It doesn't matter if insurance turns down your claim. So. Any questions on that process at all?
We can, uh, have your contact information, if you can give it to Michelle, um, that way any council members, uh, can reach out to you for any questions, for other conversations.
All right.
Great, thank you so much. Um, all right, we'll move on to staff and support team, uh, reports, uh, we'll start with our borough engineer, Cindy.
I just have one quick update to add regarding the PRP project, Bull's Pen Park. Uh, that is substantially complete, took about three weeks to complete that project by the contractor. Final council's walkthrough scheduled for tomorrow, uh, there were no modifications or additions to the contract, so final payment application. Will be, uh, uh, submitted following that, and there is a two percent retention that's being held until next year. To ensure, uh, growth of the vegetation, um, and restoration performed down there.
Uh, question, two percent enough to cover if it doesn't grow, or it doesn't work, and they, we have to hire somebody else to come in and fix it? Two percent enough to cover that?
It does, the contractor is also still covered by their performance bond, and ultimately would submit a, um, a maintenance bond at the end of the contract, which. Uh, the maintenance bond is a two-year fifty percent maintenance bond following final completion.
Great.
All right, and I'll move down to Ralph.
Uh, thank you, Madam President, uh, the only thing I have is, uh, the guys have been out fixing Henley Drive, they did extensive, uh, patchwork on Henley Drive, it turned out really well. Uh, they've been, uh, doing some other patchwork, uh, cutting back some areas, uh, tomorrow. Wednesday they're gonna be up on Homer, cutting things back, trying to clean up all the branches and stuff, cutting back up there. On the fire department side, uh, we had forty-eight calls last month, we had three hundred and thirty-two for the year. Now, the only two significant calls we had was, we had a, um, call at Buell and Homer, we had an accident down there, we had to cut a guy out of the car. And then on the parkway, we had a fully involved car buyer, that's all I have.
Thank you. Um, I don't know if Ashley was still on. She had any? Ashley, you have anything? For our manager, Michelle, any?
Um. We met with Mount Lebanon today regarding our finance law, uh, that is going amazingly, we, uh, gained access to active funds. We're learning that system, it is. Awesome, I would say, that sounds kind of nerdy, but I really am enjoying it. Um, so working with Andrew at Mount Lebanon is amazing, um. Yeah, we met with them, and I would just say that the borough team, I wanna thank them for everything, we've just been working so well together.
Thank you. Mr. Solicitor? All right, and. We'll move on, any committee report? Um, I am currently in the process of reviewing the committee assignments. And I have been having conversations with council members, um, one-on-one regarding committee. And so, Michelle expects a new committee structure this week. Very, very soon, um. Any council members, would you like to say anything?
I just wanted to say one thing.
Yeah, please.
Um, wanted to apologize to the public after our last meeting, and I was here getting sworn in my baseball hat and shorts, um. I had no idea we were getting sworn in that night. It was supposed to be this tonight, so, uh, I just wanted to apologize for my attire, um. I will be wearing from now on clothing and everything. So, thank you, everyone, it won't happen again.
Or some t-shirt. Anybody want to say any comments on council before I move on to mayor?
Just last, I just wanted to say thank you so much for the staff, the hard work and the budget, it, it has been. It's been, it's been something, so I appreciate all the hard work. We're going line by line every day and just really piling through it and, and trying to get, working with our amazing gateway engineer, you stab. You're fine, um, but we've, we've been definitely trying to do this, and I just wanna say, this is a lot of work. And thank you to the committee heads, and thank you to everybody who's put in their, their budget requests, because. It doesn't work unless we all work together, so I just wanna say thank you so much.
Thank you. You have something to say?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, um, I know that the, the council and staff work to be extremely accessible to our residents. Um, and, and, you know, have open lines of communication via email, social media, uh, you know, call the borough office, I know, too, if, you know. If, if any residents ever wanna reach out, uh, you know, you can always leave phone messages for council members here at the borough. In that light, um, you know, I had, uh, an idea and talked to some folks that, you know, said that may, maybe was a good idea. Uh, I was just gonna come sit up at the borough building, uh, one day later in September and hold some, I guess what I'll call, open office hours. So anyone in the public, any of our residents that, you know, have anything they wanna bring up, concerns, questions, uh, just issues that, you know, you're looking for. Cap, feedback on or help addressing, uh, I'm gonna be up here at the borough building on September twenty-sixth. From ten to noon, and I'll make sure that that gets, uh, pushed out and remind people again.
Thank you, Madam.
And, just please, um, I wanna remind our residents, wait, and I, I've mentioned this before, waste management. Has a terrific service, and it's called at your door. And they will pick up TVs, computers, cans of paint, you know, all that stuff that's been sitting in your house, and you wanna get rid of it, and you don't know how. And all you have to do is go on their website, it's WM, as in waste management dot com. And there is, there's a, um, an area where it's gonna get your service, and you just have to sign up for the delivery and the time, and. And you literally put it out in front of your door, and they will come and get it, so just, you know, keep that in mind, it's a great service, and. I haven't used it yet, but we've been here and complained all the time, oh, we got this, we, we have that, but, um, it's really, it's great, and it's free. So, you know, try, try to take it, guys, use it, use it.
Thank you.
It's great.
Any other council member? Uh, Paul?
Okay, and, and, you know, for me, uh, first of all, thanks, uh, uh, congratulations, Andrea, you know, I know you've done a good job in that position as vice president. Um, but today, Jay and Diane, you know, I wanna thank them both for, you know, welcoming me, for welcoming me as mayor. Into this, um, to this realm of, uh, public domain, um, I've learned a lot over the years through both of them. And they've listened to my talking and talking and on our enforcement, I, I appreciate the, your seven pledge, years, ten years, you put into that position. Uh, the other thing I wanted to mention, I've been down to the Bull's Bed Park and saw the stream restoration. I could kind of see where it overran the budget, they did an awful lot of work down there, as far as just moving things around and putting this. Heavy material down on the ground, planted trees, and just, just to let you know, um. Deb and I were to be, a, uh, connect meetings a couple of weeks ago, one of the things they've talked. Deb and I were at a meeting, a connect meeting a couple of weeks ago, one of the things they talked about, like, what is their priority? And one of them was stormwater. And and I said, and that was my, my thing, I said, we're worried about that, not so much for Churchill, but downstream from us. You know, we get the water up here on the hill, then it all goes downstream. So working on that, um, stream down there, I think is extremely valuable, not only for us, but the people down below us. But if you get a chance to walk there, I was there today, um, they pulled up stakes, it's open again, so you can go down there. Um, we haven't moved the gate up yet, we're kind of working on that, you know, doing some other things down at the park. But still, you know, um, you get an opportunity, go out and check it out.
Thank you.
Oh, oh, good thing is, um, on Sunday, October thirteenth, and I made pocket and pass out to everybody, Willen Hills will have their trunk retreat. It's from two to four up in the, uh, high school parking lot. This year, again, um, the Churchill Wilkins Rotary will be sponsoring a, a trunk. It will be fascinating candy, if you would like to stop by and help us, I know we have some road remembers, you know, sitting in with us last year, rained like all day long.
We did.
I mean, but it wasn't bad.
They all showed up, they didn't.
Yeah, there were a lot of kids, all right, there were a lot of kids there. It's it's fun, you know, the kids enjoyed some of the cars and things that you see that are decorated, really some creative things. It's worth it just to go see that, so, uh, that you can mark that on your calendar, October thirteenth, I'll pass these out.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
If you'd like to do, we'll take one of them.
Thank you, um, I would like to say a few things. Congratulations, Andrea, I'm really excited that, uh, you were vice president, I'm looking forward to working more closely with you. And I'll get rid of you. Um, and also, I'm really excited to have a full council now. Um, and I can't wait, and I'm looking forward to working with all of you uh, to make this the best place that we can. Uh, and thank you to Diane and Jay for being here today and for all of the work that you've put on this council. You said a lot of things in motion for us for this to happen, so thank you.
Thank you.
And.
Second.
All right, let's go.
All right.
Thank you, thank you to our public.
Thank you all, have a good night.
Thank you.